Mountain School Board, good evening and welcome. First item is adoption of the agenda, item 1.2.
Still moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move right into item 2.1, Student Representative Reports. Welcome. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thanks for having us.
A little pre-spring break update for us.
Yes. We're going to start today?
Yeah, I can. So tonight, Irondale has a couple of things happening. Tonight is Communication Night. We are also holding our STEAM Career Field. So it's people who are in the careers of science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. They come in and it's like a networking opportunity for students and they talk about their careers and how it helped them. We're also having our Physics Fair tonight, which is where students are, who are, students who are in physics are sharing their projects. And Student Council is also getting ready for our Mustang Night Out Dance, which is on March 28th at Mounds View from 8:00 to 11:00. Student Council is also getting ready for our senior project. And we come up with, the last couple of weeks of school, we will be doing a Giving Back Day where students will be able to volunteer for different opportunities so they can either go to a dog shelter, or they can go volunteer at a nursing home, or pick up trash from parks. So we're also getting ready for that. And that's all I have.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you. Well, since we last saw each other, Mounds View has had its second and final Pet Fest of the year, followed by the annual Girl Ask Guy Dan Silverbell. And then last Thursday, we had our Physics Fair and Career Fair. It was very eventful. There was a slight power outage halfway through the Physics Fair. And then there was also a fire alarm that went off, which definitely spiced up the night for a lot of people. And that was a really fun event. And then, like she said, we have the Mustang Night Out Dance on March 28th, and Mounds View Student Council is preparing for that. And I think that's all we have for the time being. I'll see you guys after spring break.
That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy your break, thanks.
Move to item 2.2, Open Forum. Looks like we do not have anybody signed up this evening. Item 2.3, Announcements. I've asked Shawna to read the gifts.
All right. Gifts were received from Minnesota Vikings for a Vikings football kit and curriculum book for the Phi Ed program at Turtle Lake Elementary. Megan Gangel for special education technology and occupational therapy for district-wide use. Dolly Feng and Gao Yu Miao for the Econ Club at Mounds View High School. Your Cause Wells Fargo for general use at Sunnyside Elementary, Mounds View High School, and Island Lake Elementary School. Lynn Bowen for general use at Turtle Lake Elementary School. Alpha Delta Kappa Pi Chapter for mini grants at Pinewood Elementary School. And Oscar Winsberger for general use district-wide. The following gifts were received from the Ralph, or received for the Ralph Reader Fruit Shelf from the New Brighton Lions Club, Spring Lake Park Lions Club, St. Mary Anne Church, Our Lady of Lebanon, and State Farm Companies Foundation. The total donations this period were $7,612.34. It is recommended the Board accept the gifts and extend thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you.
So moved.
No motion.
No motion.
We have consent. Additional announcements, upcoming meetings, Thursday, April 2nd, 6:00 PM, a Board work session, and Tuesday, April 14th, 7:00 PM, a regular meeting of the Board, both here at the District Center. Item 2.4, Superintendent's Report.
Great. Thank you, Jonathan. Couple things for the public tonight. First, we're getting a lot of questions, a lot of discussion around the coronavirus. And we clearly understand families may have questions and concerns about what's happening and all of the publicity that's really been around the globe. Mounds View Public Schools is proactively outlining actions that we would take in the event of any staff illness or exposure that would take place during the school year. And while schools certainly could close for any number of days or even an extended period of time directed by the state, our planning primarily is focusing on the actions we'll be taking, assuming schools would remain open. As we develop these plans, we wanted people to know we're considering any number of things. Some of these include, but are not limited to, reporting of student and staff absences. We work very closely with our health professionals to watch that across schools, to see if we're seeing any increases or drop-offs in those. We're certainly looking at our attendance policies and any grading considerations that may impact our students. Flexible learning days, so lots of questions around what would we do if one or more of our schools would have to close? Are there some options to do some things online? And we're planning for opportunities for that. We've been addressing school-sponsored travel. We'll continue to do that as we move forward. I'm sure the Board will hear more about that as we enter and come back after spring break. Co-curricular contests and events, we'll continue to monitor those through the conference with other schools and where they're at with, we're obviously taking into account health and safety of our student athletes. Additional and targeted school cleaning protocols. You probably realize as a school, kids come, they have germs, we do lots of cleaning all the time. But where we can target, if there's any exposures, we'd certainly do deep cleaning as we look into the future and making sure our schools are safe and clean for student, staff, and our community. We're talking all the time about prevention strategies and education. We're talking with students, age appropriately, of course. We're talking with our staff and families and district communications that would be going out as well. We want people to know that our school nurses and the health service staff continue to meet regularly with public health officials. They'll do that into the future. And we're going to continue to operate our schools with the health and safety of our students and staff top of mind. As always, because we're sometimes asked, parents definitely retain the right to determine if they feel it's safe for their child to come to school and can make that determination for themselves and their child. I would also offer for more information, direct people to the district website, www.moundsviewschools.org/coronavirus. We'll keep that updated. There's lots of material, lots of information there currently, and we'll continue to add more as it becomes available. With that, I would also add, just as a reminder, we will be out of school for a while. So effective Thursday, we're going on spring break here, and our schools will be closed from the March 12th through the 20th. And students would return to school then on Monday, March 23rd. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Move to item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda.
Still moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed, motion carries. Bring us to item 4.1, Construction Update, and we will welcome up Representatives from Crowe's Anderson and Wold, and turn it over to Superintendent Lex.
Wonderful. Well, we are well into our construction now. As you may recall, we've quarterly, pretty much, been inviting our team back to talk about where we are in the process to date. We've had lots of teams, lots of design, and now we're really at the stage where we're under construction at a lot of our sites. So I'm going to turn it over to our team from Wold and KA to talk a little bit about where we are on those projects.
All right, we'll maybe introduce ourselves again. I'm Paul Apikowski from Wold Architects.
I'm Tyler Erdl with Wold Architects.
I'm Gary Ziffco with Crowe's Anderson.
And I don't know if this is official, but I'm calling it the homestretch. I think we're in the homestretch. We are under-
We can't see anything, so I don't know if there's somebody who could help us with the technology.
The screen?
Is it up on that computer?
It is on here, yeah.
We just see a black hole.
All right, well, the first thing that you don't see is the schedule. That shows we are into construction on all of the projects now, so it's that same grasp that you see in the projects have been broken into three phases. There's a significant number of projects done now at this point. Maybe we will.
And we do have the presentation in our package copies.
So the next, the next piece in there is those pie charts. So you can see, this was last year, basically, that we had 59% of the projects under design. And things progressed. And then, as of March of 2020, we've moved everything into construction or completed. So that's why I say we're in the homestretch. And then for the fall of 2020, it's-
So can I just ask a question on that, that March 2020, the pie chart? Is that 67 perc, or 33% completed? Is that, is that based on number of sites or dollars let?
It's mostly number of sites.
Number of sites, okay.
Yeah. It actually, intuitively, I would say it's probably not too far off from-
From dollars.
Dollars, yeah.
Because the big dollars are the, the high schools and the Edgewood pool.
Edgewood, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Then, moving into fall of 2020, a great deal of the school district will be done. We are estimating about 20% again by project won't be completed. And Tyler, can you just read what's on that?
Sure. So just a couple of pieces, as the Edgewood new pool becomes completed, then the one at Irondale can then start construction to turn that into the new fitness center. So that's why, a couple of those pieces there. And then, the existing auditorium at Irondale, once the new one is completed, construction will then start on that one. So we're trying to maintain access to all of the amenities as we can during construction. And then, once the new spaces are completed, we can then start on the old ones.
And there's a few components that won't be open right away in the fall. The new auditorium at Irondale, for instance, won't be completed. The commons in the front will be open, the new door will be open, the parking lot will be open. The auditorium won't be ready until I think we're projecting November.
Correct, yep.
And the new, the new pool at Edgewood will be open for the fall swimming season?
Yep, that'll come online this summer.
Oh, great, okay.
And there's the magic day, spring of 2020, I think should be done.
Perfect.
Yeah, so we'll just, just a couple of pictures of Bel Air. This is the back addition, two-story addition that we're just completing as we speak. So those are some actual pictures of the finished spaces at Bel Air. Over the, over the spring break, we'll transition, the, the front of the building is the new cafeteria. So they're going to start eating lunches in the new cafeteria while we demolish the kitchen that is currently serving them. But, so, making a lot of progress. We've got some, some stuff finished at Bel Air, so they get to see some of the finished spaces as we're still working throughout the school season. These are just some pictures of the cafeteria. Believe it or not, that was this week, but that'll be finished and done when they come back from spring break.
And then, this is just a reminder of what those spaces will look like once they're completed and kids are occupying the spaces, so.
Mounds View High School, this is an actual photo of the, of the finished space, the Cull's Court in the center of the building. So we're, we're finishing up spaces as we, as we go through the building. The additions, all the superstructure, the, of the classroom additions on the front, classroom additions on the back, the gym, all that stuff is up. The structure's up, the roofing is going on, the slabs are being poured, so now we're focusing on finishing those, those additions. You can see, those are just a couple of pictures of, the one on the left is the gymnasium, and the one on the right is the front, is that the front classroom addition?
It's the front of the gymnasium.
Yeah.
Then again, just a reminder of what the finished spaces projected to look like.
Edgewood Middle School, so again, we've, we've been handing over spaces there as well. We've handed over the new science addition, and then the classroom addition is, is being handed over as well. We are, again, continuing to work on the, the big addition of the, the pool and the gym. That structure is up, the roof's on, we're pouring slabs, so we're, now we're starting to complete the build-out. This is a picture of the gym on top, it's, the walls are being painted. And then at the bottom, that is the pool, the slab, the slabs and the actual pool deck has been poured, and we're moving along at Edgewood as well. Couple renderings of that space.
Can you remind me, how many lane pool? Is it eight lane pool?
Yeah.
Okay, with the diving wall?
Integrated, integrated, not separate.
Yep, perfect.
Irondale, we've, we've handed over some spaces there. Of course, you know they've, they've occupied the first addition that we completed as a temporary front entrance. We've finished off the courtyard infill, they're occupying that. We have the front of the building, which is the, the main addition of the auditorium and the new, new entrance and admin space. The admin spaces, we're starting to paint and hang ceilings in there, so we're, we're tracking well on the, on the admin side of it. And the, the auditorium, the Joyce and Decker on, the roof is going on as we speak, and we're focused on finishing up that over the course of the summer, fall. The pictures there, the top left is the, the, the main commons area at the front entrance. Top right is the auditorium. And then, the bottom center is the auditorium, standing on the stage looking, or actually standing in the crowd looking at the stage, so.
A few renderings there showing the commons, fitness center, and then the exterior of the, looking at the auditorium.
I'm sorry, what did you just say? About the student commons? It was standing, looking out from the auditorium?
Oh, the bottom, the bottoms, the bottom one is standing in the, in the seating, seated area at the auditorium looking at the stage.
So that rectangle, you can see there is actually the stage opening through the, through the construction bracing there.
Okay.
So we're putting the, hitting the decking on right now and the, and the roofing going on in that area.
You can still see the sky, but we're going to close that off.
It could be retractable.
Not in open air. Amateurs.
So this, this fall, the Bel, Bel Air classrooms will be done. The special ed and cafeteria will, will make that, that completion of that project. Edgewood Middle School classrooms, gym and pool will be done. Irondale High School will be done. The auditorium is gonna, just because the extensive amount of finishes that go into the auditorium, that will leak into the fall. I think we're, by Christmas time, you know, we'll have the, the new auditorium and we'll be finishing up the weight and fitness area as well. That's that whole pool swap between Edgewood and Irondale. Mounds View High School, the classrooms and the gym will be done by the fall. Chippewa Middle School, we're actually, the Phase 3 projects, Chippewa, Pinewood, Sunnyside, and Valentine, we're starting those. As we speak, we're, we're onsite and-
Have we seen renderings on those yet? I think last-
Yep, last time I think we showed those.
And I think we have them all online, too.
I don't feel like I've seen Chippewa.
I feel like I've seen so many pretty pictures there, I'm starting to-
I don't think we've seen Chippewa.
Colin should have all of the updated renderings, and I'll double-check with him to make sure we've got them all posted on the website for people to take a look at.
We'd be happy to bring it back next time we come to see.
I haven't seen any of those, I don't remember Pinewood or Sunnyside.
So Chippewa, Pinewood, those projects will be done this summer. We're, we're starting this spring. As I said, Sunnyside will be started this month, and then that one will, will finish in the fall as well. Kind of similar to how Turtle finished up around Thanksgiving time of 2020, they'll be moving into those spaces. Valentine is very similar to Bel Air, and that will, that one will go into January, January, February of 2021, when we finish off the, the back addition and the, and move out of there. So, again, Irondale Fitness Center, or the fitness room, and then Edgewood Pool, we have to fill in the hole.
So again, we're well along our journey in the homestretch. The contingencies for the projects are in good shape right now for where we're going, so we're highly confident we're going to finish-
Our five favorite words, on time and on budget?
On time and on budget. And I also would like to report that I believe we've met all of the promises made to the taxpayers. All of the scope of work that was talked about being done has, has either been done or is out to bid and awarded for contracts, so we're in good shape to meet everyone's promises.
Great. Thanks so much for working-
All the projects are on the website, too. You can, you can see them all.
Thanks so much for working with the staff, too. And I want to specifically call out Chris Vink in the Activities Office at Irondale, who's had to make alternative arrangements for a lot of things for next fall with the auditorium. No auditorium at Irondale for a whole entire drama season and choir and orchestra and band concerts. He's done a lot of extra work to make accommodations, so we appreciate that.
Anything you have to add?
Well, we have opportunities to get out. I think we were trying to schedule with the Board an opportunity for those of you who can make it, and before an upcoming work session, just get out, get onsite, and walk through and see some of the construction as it's finishing up. Once things finish up, just a reminder, we definitely will do at-site levels ribbon cuttings. And so we'll invite people in, as we've done before, for the community. If you're not able to make that, I know our principals are very proud of our schools and, and all that's happening there, so certainly reach out as these come to fruition. And definitely, the three major projects, both high schools and Edgewood, will do big events for those, because there'll be lots of opportunity for people to get in and, and see what's happening there. They're, they're pretty amazing spaces. Again, very grateful to this community for supporting this work, and just excited to show off the new spaces to anyone interested, so.
Similarly grateful to your team. I have not been hearing a lot from members of the community, or staff, or others regarding construction, which means that everything is going well, so thank you for, for that work.
Yep, thank you.
And thanks for being here tonight.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks.
That will take us to item 4.2, Enrollment Updates, and we're going to invite up Carol.
Good evening. So tonight is just a brief update on how enrollments for the current school year are looking. So there's two attachments to your agenda item. One is a snapshot of the enrollment as of end of first semester for the school year. So you can see in the large box, bottom right corner, 11,542 students. That's where we sit as of the end of first semester. And then I just gave you a couple of comparative, comparative data points where we projected and where we were at as of the first October 1 reporting. And so, feeling really good with where the enrollment numbers are.
And I have to say that our projections are really good. I mean, that's, that is pretty good work. I mean, really, I mean, Carol, that's, that's your, your work and, and your, I know all the staff at each site really does a good job at that, of that, but I just want to point out, you know, the projection we had, I don't know what the date was for that projection, but, you know, 11,597 compared to 11,542, that's-
Yeah, so we make those projections in January of the, prior to the school year starting. So right now, early January, we started making projections for the 2021 school year. We tend to want to be as conservative as possible because we're staffing and we're making a lot of financial decisions on those. And so we've been fortunate that things have been fairly stable, but a lot of things impact that, you know, families' choices and such. And so you can also see some of that stability in the second page, that's our capture rate. And so that just reflects the resident students that we are currently serving. We also then collect information about where some of our resident students are choosing to attend elsewhere or in our non-public schools. And so then we look at how many of the total resident students we're capturing here in our buildings. And you can see for the past three years, now we've, we've stabilized, that's continued to increase, but now we've started to see it stabilize at 85.7%, so that's-
So for historical purposes, do you happen to know what it was a decade ago?
I do not. I just remember when we continued to see it get into the 80s, 80%. I remember Hazel Reinhardt commenting on how our capture rate was really, really high compared to other metro districts that she worked in, so.
When we were hitting 80?
Yeah.
And now that we're at 85.7, even more so.
Yeah. And a lot of that depends on what other choices are in your community school, you know, in your community to choose from. But, you know, we have good, good things and a lot of choices for students and families, and so that shows in this capture rate. So that's just a brief update there. Welcome, any questions you have?
Super no action on that. Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll take us to item 5.1, everybody's favorite topic, Policy Review. We're going to get a second reading of the harassment, violence, and hazing policy, EG 3111.
Thank you, and my presentation will take about a second. I think everything you have is here. I read these, and we made the corrections that we talked about at the first reading, so you are at the second reading, which is the number that you need to have so you can take action to either approve or disapprove. So the administrative recommendation is that you would approve the adopted policies that are in front of you as revised.
I move to approve policies EG 3104 and EG 3111 as revised.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. That'll take us to item 6.1, An Update on Summer Programs, and we will welcome Jeff Arlenhofer and Carl Brown. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Moving right along.
We are. Before we share the plans for the summer of 2020 and the programming we're going to be offering our, our students and families, I want to share how appreciative we are to the, the many players within the district. It truly is a team effort. So you can imagine coordinating summer programming is, is a, a lot of planning, a lot of alignment, but with the construction, obviously, that we've been engaging in the last couple of years, it's been magnified. So specifically the sites and the principals, teachers, custodians, support staff, and then the district folks. It really takes a, a whole team to do this, is transportation, curriculum instruction, food service, HR, maintenance, finance, public relations, I mean, it's, it's everybody, right? Student services, community ed. So we're feeling pretty darn good about where we're sitting for summer, but we'll, we'll kind of give you a Cliff Notes version and the public as well of where things are going to be located. So within our summer school programs, we're going to have utilizing Turtle Lake, Island, and Island Lake primarily for our elementary programming this year. So students at Turtle, Pinewood, and Sunnyside will be going to Turtle Lake for, for their summer programming, those that are attending. Island, Valentine, and Bel Air will be going to Island Lake for, for their program. Again, it's not everybody, it's students who either self-identified or maybe were tapped on the shoulder and saying, you might want to take a look at doing some summer programming at any of these sites. High View is going to be housing our high school, our ALC, and our AL program. And then, again, they're going to be having their own students at High View. Edgewood, we've really been fortunate that they're going to be able to stay in their building, which is something they've really wanted to do this year. That was really a huge effort of Food Service to help us out there, that they're going to be bringing in some coolers and things of that nature so that we can utilize that space. Chippewa is going to be able to remain in place, although there's going to be some different, you know, entrances and exits they're going to have to use to accommodate their, their work. But for the most part, our, our schools are going to be able to operate where they need to operate this summer. We're very excited about that. We're, again, appreciative of those folks who are helping us out. I'm going to pass it to Carl to talk a little about what we're doing with some of our, our special ed and our other childcare options, and we're going to come back to what is going to be open and what's not going to be open this summer. So a little more specifics there.
All right, thanks, Jeff. So our Extended School Year program for special education students, we've got a number of programs. So our Twin Lakes location for our high school, we'll have Reach Academy have a summer program. We'll also have programs at CLT Shoreview. We also have our Extended School Year Middle School program that's going to be at Edgewood this summer. And then, our elementary program will be at Turtle Lake. And then we also have part of our Extended School Year for early childhood students and younger students will be at the Early Childhood Education Center this summer. We also have, let's see, for our K-Camp, for Pike Lake and Snail Lake incoming kindergartners, we'll do that at Snail Lake again. We did that last, here for a couple of years, and have two different for incoming Pike Lake students and incoming Snail Lake students. And then, let's see, early childhood at our Bridges program and our Early Childhood Education Center will have some additional programs for their, for Y Care, some of the things for summer care. We have a, like Jeff had mentioned, our elementary program we'll have at Turtle Lake. And Island Lake for our summer school program, there's a summer school only option for families that want to do Y Care for that, so if they need summer care for the afternoon when they're attending summer school, they can do that. Plus, we'll have additional students at Turtle Lake and Island Lake. And then we will have Pike Lake open, it's just a general Y Care site. So we typically try to have a few sites throughout the district, but with building closures, those are the three sites for the summer.
So I, I want to make sure I understand that. So is, is Y Care being offered? I'm just looking at the charts here. We've got summer school at Turtle and Island, is Y Care also at Turtle and Island?
It is. So for the students who would attend the Turtle Lake Summer School Program, there's an option, and so if you're a, I want to get this right, a Pinewood, a Sunnyside, a Turtle Lake student, you could have after-school care or after-summer school care at Turtle Lake as part of the summer school program. And then if you're attending summer school at Island Lake, you could also then take, pick up the afternoon, because we will finish about a little bit before 1:00 every day, so.
The chart doesn't show that, so that's why I'm just making sure I understand that correctly.
Okay.
Unless I'm reading wrong. Unless I'm reading wrong, under Y Care, right, it just shows location, Island Lake, Snail, right?
So that's for full-time Y Care?
Oh, yes.
Just in those locations?
Yes. I may look at a different version of this one, but yes, it is, so we have, families can do full-time Y Care at Turtle Lake and Island and they can also do it at Pike Lake, but then we have an additional summer school only option, so if you only need summer school care, you can pick that up as well.
Okay, okay.
Yep, and I believe the Y is also doing some other programs at the Shoreby Y for families who wanna do that too, so they've got quite a few different options for different ages and then school age care. Other programs we've got, so elementary and middle school, summer band and orchestra, they will typically do the sites for that, we will have locations at Island Lake and Turtle Lake this summer as long with Chippewa and High View and those will follow the basically the month of July for the program, following up with a concert at the end, and then last time, at the last board meeting, we talked about some of the community education, summer camps and programs that are happening, our traditional day camp and summer camp programs will be at Turtle Lake, about ten weeks of programming from June fifteenth through August thirteenth, and then we do have a variety of other programs that are in our catalog that are at different locations that are open, that we'll talk a little bit about which other sites are open, but those those programs, quite a few different things all over the district this summer.
Yeah, I know you have that paper in front of you for the for the community watching on and television, this this, there's a lot to run through here with a lot of different sites, but I'll start with with our our two large flagship high schools, Irondale, the lower level's gonna be open to students and staff, which is gonna be a really nice thing this summer, the athletic facilities and the gym space are also going to be available, and the pool is gonna be open until the end of July, so that's gonna be going on at Irondale. Moundsview High School, the stadium turf area will be open as it was last year, the baseball fields, although there might be some different way of routing to get back there, will be open, as well as the tennis courts. High View Middle School will be a hundred percent open, that project was completed, as you know, last summer. Chippewa Middle School, the gym, the music areas, the classrooms, those will all be open, the the music students will have a different entrance to come in and same with summer school, so those areas will be available for our kids. Again, Edgewood, the classrooms will be open, that's a huge plus, and and their pool will be available. Pike Lake, Snail Lake, Turtle Lake and Island Lake will all be one hundred percent usable for the summer. In terms of the things that will be closed, Irondale High School, with the exception of those things mentioned, the building is closed, it's gonna be closed any through traffic or our folks that are coming there for other reasons other than the ones that are listed, the deans, as they did last year, will be conducting their four-year planning meetings at High View Middle School, and then again, the deans, the clerical and the administrative staff will all be housed at High View for for the summer. For Moundsview High School, again, with those exceptions of the items mentioned, the building's gonna be closed, their four-year planning meetings will take place here in the district center where they were last year, clerical staff will be housed here, the administrative staff will probably be spending most of their time in in their offices, 'cause those will be open at Moundsview, but sometime here as well. For Edgewood, the north end of the building will be closed for construction, and then these buildings will be closed completely for safety and for construction purposes, Sunnyside, Valentine Hills, Pinewood and Bel Air, so those will not be available for students and their staff will be either farmed or elsewhere, or they might be able to stay in pockets of their building, but it won't be open to traffic from the community.
All right, I apologize, I, to clarify Y Care, I I just realized on my notes too, so Island Lake, we do have summer school that's directly there at Island Lake, and then if you need Y Care, you can take it there. Turtle Lake students, we will have transportation available to transport students for to Snail Lake for that, we do, we do not have Y Care this summer at Turtle Lake, which we typically have in other summers, but right now, we've got a lot of programs at Turtle Lake right now, so we have Snail Lake and Island Lake as the Y Care site, so.
But then we're providing the transportation.
We are, we will transport students back to and from summer school and then part of that is if they need the transportation to Y Care, instead of taking them home at the end, we'll bring them to Y Care.
Okay.
Let's see, a couple other sites that, one, it's not in our district, but we do have some students that are participating in the North Suburban Summer Academy this summer, that's at Columbia Heights High School and Highland Elementary, again, like it's been done in the past, and then as Jeff mentioned, we've got a lot of movement with facilities and some areas are open for part of the buildings and within community education, we've been working with our community groups that typically use our facilities to try to look for alternate locations and squeeze people in and sometimes things open up and we find out that groups want it and we'll try to work them in, but it quite a bit of movement in the programs, but trying to keep our high school programs as much on campus as we can for the summer.
Is the Y Care offered all summer long?
It is, they have, they have some, full summer options for families.
Lots of moving parts.
Lots of moving parts.
All fit on two pages, that was a, it's a Cliff Notes version. Any other questions?
I have a question about, can I ask a question about community ed?
Sure.
I was looking at the magazine and have we always had Moundsview youth sports prep stuff and Irondale sports prep prep stuff for different sports?
We have.
We always have had it like that.
Yeah, for many years, so in the catalog, the bulk of it is the summer camp program that we're running at Turtle Lake, and then we have a lot of different sports activities and camps that many of our high school coaches or the teams and groups will offer, so strength and conditioning has always been popular, and then depending on the sport or the activity, a number of skills camps for younger students and then even high school level developmental programs that will run throughout the summer.
Okay, I just wondered, since kids at High View can still choose where they wanna go to high school?
They can.
They can, so it's kind of, you know, if you put your youth person in a Moundsview one and then later wanna go to High, it just seemed odd, I didn't know that we had done that.
Yeah, a lot of students will, my understanding too is it's whatever youth association they're participating in, a lot of times they'll travel with that, but they still, if a Irondale or student that may be going to Irondale, the Moundsview camps lined up better for them, they still can take them.
I see, okay, well, that's, oh, good, that's great, all right, thanks.
Other questions?
No, one comment, I, no question, but just as you, as board members, may get questions or for the community, call us this summer, we are here at the district center because people will make assumptions, well, I thought I could do this, or I thought that program was there, or I went, and so they must not be running it, that may not be true, it just may be at a different location, or we had to adjust time, so I encourage you to call in advance if ever possible, but even in the moment, if if you're looking for something and you can't find it, give us a call or stop by and we'll help you get to the right programs and the right place to to meet your needs through the summer, 'cause a lot of change, a lot of moving parts, a lot of things happening.
And this is all available on the website?
Yep, we'll continue to update and of course messaging will go out from each of the sites to families and students potentially involved in the program, so as an example, Pinewood moving to Turtle Lake for summer school, the Pinewood families would get information from Principal Skinner, et cetera, here's where we're gonna be, here's information and certainly would be available to answer questions as well.
And I think we all know, it's probably maybe not ideal for families to be traveling to a school that maybe isn't as close to them, but I know, having been around Irondale a lot last year when it was permanently closed for everyone, really moved construction along and really helped us protect the students from that during the school year, so while not, you know, none of those volleyball players loved playing in the un-air-conditioned gyms over in High View, they knew that it was, you know, in the long run, good for them to get that construction done at Irondale, so it's great for everyone to just be patient and put that aside.
We're almost there.
Exactly, the end is in sight.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
We'll move to item seven point one, updates, we'll start with AMSD and Legislative, Mr. Demay.
Superintendent Lennox and I attended the AMSD meeting, we had some interesting presentations, the one that took the most time was former Supreme Court Justice Alan Page and Minneapolis Fed Chair Neil Kashkari presented on a constitutional amendment they're interested in having the legislature adopt and put on the ballot this fall, it basically would provide that students are guaranteed a quality education in the state, that is not necessarily defined, that would probably flow out of some court cases and some legislative act, action, you know, the push both by Page and Kashkari is to try to close the achievement gap, they went through a lot of things that the legislature has done the last twenty-plus years, things school districts did, and it really hasn't narrowed the gap, they, later that day, they followed up and presented, I believe, to the House Education Committee at the Legislature, the future of this is uncertain because the Legislature needs to push this along and it is controversial and so, but there was a lot of good discussion and a lot of good questions about this, so if you're interested in it, I do have the presentation, I believe Chris has a presentation, the slides, and and looking up before the meeting, there's plenty online about this, so if you're interested in that, we had a very, very quick but interesting update on teacher licensure from some different committees, the Department of Education, that was very interesting, and then a long list of things for legislative updates, so they're still there, they're still busy and.
And it's still early.
And it's still very, very early, we still have until May twenty-second, so that's that's my update, thank you.
Thank you. Move to nine sixteen in Ramsey County League.
Okay, let's see, just a couple of things, we did settle a couple of contracts, the two eighty-four admin support staff, a one point zero seven and zero percent over two years, doesn't include step movement, of course, and stuff, and there was another one I can't find, anyway, also, February was Career and Tech Month and we had a great presentation, three students came, one who's in the EMT program, one in the diesel truck and engine technology program and one in auto technology, and the students spoke, they all have had internships at local businesses, the EMT, she did a ride-along and they actually had to go to an accident and she, they, they let her come and be part of the team to help this person, and so it was very exciting, Moundsview has sixty-seven participants in Career and Tech, just something new that is going to start is an addition of high demand, living wage, entry-level jobs to try and serve all the learners at nine sixteen, grades five through graduation, employability skills, career exploration, mentoring, skill development, community employment, introduction to hospitality will be new and introduction to medical careers for that population will be new, so that's exciting as well. So this Friday, I know you all have received an invitation, this is the second new Chair of the Met Council, Charlie Zelli, who is replacing Nora Slawick, she had come and given a a great talk, maybe a year ago, and then she left for something else, and Charlie is coming, and so this Friday from seven thirty to nine at CTV, there's no registration, there's no cost, any of these, the second Friday of every month, we'll have a program and everyone is welcome, leadership staff, school board members, because Moundsview's a member, everyone is welcome.
Thank you. We'll take us to item eight point one, school board member reports. A quiet night, we'll close with just two really quick things, one, Chris, thanks for the update on coronavirus, you know, obviously, you can't pick up a newspaper or turn on the news without hearing about it, I'm appreciative of the work that you and your team are doing in our buildings to make sure that our families are safe and our students are safe, it's of utmost importance, have a high level of confidence, and you mentioned that, you know, ultimately, a family's decision, that's an important message for the community as we navigate through this over the course of the coming weeks, and then we're off to spring break, so we'd like to wish all of our families, regardless of whether you're traveling or staying at home or managing and juggling through childcare for the course of the next week or so, wish you a safe and enjoyable spring break. Is there anything else to come before the board? We are adjourned.